This conference will now be recorded.
It is June 10th, 2020, 4:00 PM, and I am going to call this Visually Council Meeting to order. I will start first by reminding everybody that if you're not speaking, please mute your mics to reduce sound. So I don't know if we need a quick lesson in that, how to do that, but please mute your mics. And we will begin with a roll call. So I'll begin with Councilman Couch. Councilman Owen. Councilwoman Kinzer.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Here.
Okay. And I just received a text from Councilwoman Carnegie. She says, "I'm on the call, but no sound." Councilman McGoffin. All right. And Councilman DeYoung.
Present.
Perfect, okay. I thought that I would start, because we have moved into Phase Two, I'm going to start with an update that we received actually this morning from the city unit. And starting right at the top, what they shared here, the new cases since the last report, which was last week, is 15, or 14, I'm sorry, the total number of new cases is 14. The total number of cases is 449. New deaths due to COVID is zero. Total number of deaths due to COVID is 15. The total who are hospitalized currently is 51, and the total who have recovered is 308. So good news, good percentages there, all those. Sad to report those that were lost. Remember, just because we're in Phase Two, we are not exiting COVID. COVID is still very much present, and if we want to continue to move out of this and into Phase Three and eventually Four, we must remember to wear our masks and do hand sanitizing. Social distancing, please remember to stay six foot apart. Gatherings of no more than five people who are outside your family. And the governor is still saying limited essential travel, so really hard for us, especially since we've been so isolated, but that is what he has directed. And please, 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 remember to wash your hands. Our moms were right when they told us that we needed to do that. And a reminder for those who have asked, I've received a lot of emails on this. A reminder that City Hall is a government building, and it is not allowed to open until Phase Three. So come Phase Three, we'll be open, even though yesterday, as of yesterday, and I know that our city supervisor, Doug Maron, is going to talk about this, we called everybody back together. So that's all that I have to say on that for right now. So moving on to approval of the agenda, do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda. This is Councilman Allen.
Thank you. All right, okay, DeYoung. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. The motion was made by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman DeYoung. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Any opposed? Same sign. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, items one through four. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, this is Brenda Kinzer. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Uh, I second.
Oh, Mr. McGoffin, thank you. We'll make a note that you have joined the meeting, thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinzer and seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Yeah, I know this is challenging, because sometimes the mics are hard to get on to speak. All right, we're going to move right into staff reports. I'm going to begin with Chief Klinger. And Chief Klinger, before you talk, though, you know, this has been, it's been a long three months, but your team has been exceptional in having to have to meet all the requirements that have been set forth, not only by the governor, but also by our Skagit Health Board. I want to thank you and your staff for everything that you are doing and continue to do. I know that there's been some challenges, but you all have accomplished them and overcome them, as you always do, with expediency and class. So with that, Chief Klinger.
Well, thank you, Mayor. No update as far as the COVID side. We have had an uptick in fires. I'm not sure what I could contribute that to. We were out last night upriver in the Lake Tae area. But as far as COVID goes, things are operating as normal here.
All right. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Chief Tucker. And before you speak, I know that this has really been a challenging time. There's police officers are under fire. But one thing that I will say is that I've heard over and over again from many people within the community that they really appreciate all that you and team do, the way that you're committed to the community, and you're actually quite involved in the schools and the community. So I want to thank you for that, and I also want to thank you for all the goodies that the public brings in to thank you, and you're sharing them with me. Go ahead.
Absolutely. Now, that's one of the things, it's a pleasure to work here, is I work for good people, and I work with good people, and I serve good people, so it's a pleasure to keep on doing, even though the world's kind of a weird place right now. Speaking of a weird place, we loaned out all of our little baby police officers, our recruits, to the COVID testing site this week. They needed some help at the site. And honestly, the training officers were running out of things, busy work to keep them busy right now, and they needed kind of a break. So we shipped them off to the COVID site. Our next, I guess, mission is to start gearing up for Fourth of July with no organized parade and no fireworks display and no carnival, no laura rodeo. Our thoughts are that people might turn to legally obtained intoxicants and other legally purchased explosives. One good point, we did find out the Upper Skagit is not selling fireworks this year, which will be kind of handy for us. People have to go a little bit further to get their things that will blow their fingers off. Our, we're, I just got off the phone with a group who is planning on a Fourth of July Freedom Parade slash protest. They're calling it a protest because parades are banned. And we're not exactly sure where that's going to go, but we're going to have staff on any way to manage that if it happens. But it's going to start catching some momentum on Facebook, and I think they're going to schedule an event on Facebook, and I'll keep you apprised as I find information out, but it might be wise to just keep looking at what's going on on social media in that regard. We're here to just make sure people stay safe, and I've already talked to the mayor and city supervisor about what we could be doing, and as soon as we find out the extent of this Freedom Protest, it's actually a protest, when I got off the phone with Marilyn Pineda, the lady who's helping organize this, she says we are calling it a Freedom, a Fourth of July Freedom Protest, protesting that there's no other events going on. So I think they've got some good-hearted people that are interested in this, and we're going to just make sure everybody stays as safe as they can. And that's kind of it for me. We're going to start doing more of a, or start social media push on expectations on the Fourth of July. If it goes up and blows up, it's, you know, safe and sane fireworks are legal. Unsafe and insane fireworks are not legal, and we're going to be enforcing as appropriate. But I'm really hoping it's going to rain like heck on the night of the third or the night of the fourth. That would be my vote. Or murder hornets would show up, and everybody wants to stay inside. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right. Director of Building, John Coleman, and John.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for the chief.
Oh, yes, Mr. DeYoung.
Yeah. Mayor, I have a question for Chief Klinger and a question for Chief Tucker. Chief Klinger, I understand we've lost one of our firefighters to some career development over there in District, Fire District Eight, and I was wondering if you could talk about that a little bit.
That's Josh Carpenter. We have, he's on temporary assignment there. He's still pulling his shifts here also.
Okay, good.
Doing double duty.
Right, and he gets to wear a chief hat over there, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right. Well, that's just great for the professional development that's coming out of our fire department. And Chief Tucker, a neighbor had one of their cars crashed into over the weekend on 11th Place, and we're Sterling Terminates on the east end of town. And I was just wondering, since that was a hit and run, and had a conversation with the residents there, that they had seen some frequency and uptick in some speeding through that area, and also folks disregarding stop signs. And I was just wondering, off of your tremendous memory there, what, is this a new thing? Or is this something that we're continuing to look at?
Oh, this is, this is just an ongoing thing. It sprouts up everywhere. Everybody wants to let us know that their intersection in front of their house is the worst one in town, that we can sit in their driveway, and we'll arrest people left and right. We can actually fund another officer just by writing tickets in front of their house. Probably not necessarily the case, but we do have a traffic issue. Myself and my patrol sergeants and lieutenant have been directing people to get out and do some extra traffic enforcement, because this is a pretty important topic for everybody that lives in town. It is probably one of the most frequent complaints we get. And, but you know, one of the things we're running into right now is summer's kicking in, military duty's kicking in. And I don't know if I've shared this with you, I shared with Doug and the mayor. We have four squads running right now, and you may look for me here at the office during the day. But a lot of times I am on working weekends, alternating with Lieutenant McElwraith, and I are working weekend day shifts. And so we're bouncing around a little bit, just trying to keep staffed up to cover people taking time off and doing all the things that people want to do. I think I'm covering next Sunday at 6:00 AM for somebody that's in the military. So we've got limited staff, but we're trying to do that as much as we can. And I do get the, our baby police officers, their eyes light up when they say, "Let's go out and see if we can get some radar on some cars," and they have a good time with that. So we are addressing it. It's an ongoing issue. We're looking for a better solution once we get a couple of bodies out of the academy.
Okay, so.
Chief Tucker.
Moving on, okay.
Can I ask, Chief? A question, this has come up from several of my constituents. Is the speed limit 25 miles an hour down alleys in Cedar Woolley, which is very dangerous for little children that may run out? Is the speed limit 25 miles an hour in town?
You know, I'd have to, I'd have to look and see. That's never really come up, what the actual speed limit is. And honestly, too unsafe for conditions. If you had an alley that didn't have any access points where people were driving faster, that's really not an issue. But if you have points that have, that it's just not safe to drive anything over five or 10 miles an hour, we can take issue with that. And typically, what comes up with that is somebody will complain that my neighbor roars out of their back driveway every day, you know, at 7:30 in the morning, and comes roaring in every night at 5:30. We can take those individually, but I'll get back to you on any actual speed limit. I know we probably talked about this 20 years ago, and I just don't remember what the exact answer is. So I'll do a little bit of research and send it out to the mayor, and she could pass it on to the entire council.
I thank you very much for that input, okay?
You betcha.
Okay, thank you, Chief. So moving on to Director of Building, John Coleman. John, good to see you back in the building, and thank you for all the work. I'm sure it was challenging at times doing the work from home, but thank you for all the work that you did complete, because we are moving forward with some building and development. So thanks to you. So, John?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so things have been going along. The builders have been building as much as they've been permitted to by, you know, state regulations. And we understand that we're, there's a bit of a backlog that people are hoping to submit stuff, but we haven't seen it yet, and we've been open since Tuesday. But we were expecting a kind of a glut of building permit applications over the next week or so, which would be a good thing, get people back to work. I've got plenty on the agenda later today, but I wanted to talk about, you know, now that, now that we're able to talk about things that are more than just COVID-related issues, wanted to bring up some of the things that we hadn't been able to talk to in the past several weeks. One of which was, back in March, the council approved accessory dwelling units. And we've had a lot of, handful of people call and ask about, you know, what they can do to get an accessory dwelling unit. And then they inevitably say, "So what are the fees going to be?" And my reply is, "Well, the council hasn't had a chance to talk about that yet." If you recall, when we, when we passed the ordinance for the ADUs, we, we had some discussion about what fees should be. But we gave ourselves until July 1st in order to actually come up with fees for specifically transportation impact fees, sewer connection fees, and park impact fees. Question being is, ADUs are smaller, do we charge a full fee connection for an ADU? Or do we maybe not charge anything? And so Stefan made some recommendations in the past, and I'll give you a quick rundown on what those are in a moment. But we're not going to make any decisions today. I just wanted to bring it back to the consciousness of the council, because at the next council meeting, I'd like to bring an ordinance to the council proposing something, and then hopefully possibly have action at that June 24th council meeting, so we can get some fees in place, should anybody apply for an ADU permit, which will be possible to do after July 1st. So that said, I just want to give a quick rundown. The permit fee itself, we've recommended $250 for, you know, the application fee, and that's just the administrative part of it. And then for, if someone were to have an ADU approved, they would be charged, what we're recommending is 60% of what a normal traffic impact fee would be for a ADU between the size of 451 feet and 800 square feet. And that would be just under $1,500. And then the smaller ADUs, which are between 205 feet up to 450 feet, would be $735. And then sewer connections would follow that same 60%, and then 50% of that 60% for, for the connection fee. So a 450 square foot to 800 square foot ADU would be, instead of the normal 8,500, it would be 5,182. And then smaller ADUs, which are between 205 feet up to 450 feet, would be 2,591 dollars per unit. And then park impact fees would follow that same prorated schedule. A normal park impact fee is $1,500, and the reduced rate would be 915 for the standard ADU and 475 for a smaller ADU. I recognize nobody has that information written in front of them, and it may sound just like a lot of information that you probably can't remember offhand, but I just wanted to put it out there for discussion purposes at the next council meeting. So that's the ADU issue. Another issue is the county and all the jurisdictions in the county had been working over the past year or so on a new natural hazard mitigation plan for FEMA. And when, so we had all of the public meetings, the public hearings, sent it out to, I think we brought it to council for their initial look at it at one point also. And then sent it to the county to bundle it up and finish their work, and then send it off to FEMA. That was done. FEMA has approved it. And so now, what they're asking is for all of the jurisdictions to pass a resolution saying if they adopt the 2020 Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for Skagit County. So I'll do that at the next council meeting and give you more information about that. So I wanted to let you know that that's something that's been kind of in the backlog that we haven't been able to bring to council over the past few months. And so we'll be bringing that to you. And then I will be talking more about things that were in the backlog later in the meeting. But that's all I have for now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for John.
Yes.
John, I know it's been a few months since we talked about this, but would it be possible to bring more than one proposal? Because I don't necessarily support the prorated approach across the board. I don't necessarily think it makes sense to, you know, prorate everything the same, because I think your traffic impact fees should be the same, but it might make sense to prorate certain utilities. But I, I mean, we can have that discussion at the meeting, but I, so the council knows where. I guess where I'm coming from, I don't agree with the prorated idea across the board.
I can, I can work with the, with Public Works Director on that, and because the traffic impact fees come out of the, out of the Public Works Transportation Plan. Well, will be enveloped into it, really. We're, we're trying to work on the, the transportation plan and the ADU thing at the same time, and kind of bring them together. And so we can have a discussion about that and see what we can do as far as bringing you options.
Okay, yeah, when we talked about it last time, I made the same request, because I don't remember if I was the only one, but I didn't support the prorating of it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Couch, and thank you, John. So moving on to Director of Public Works, Mark Freiberger. Welcome back from vacation. And gosh, you were quite diligent in staying in the office and working throughout the last three months. It was impressive to see the work that you were getting done. Thank you, Mark.
I don't see Mark on here.
I don't either, no. I was just checking that. Okay.
This is John. I'll go down. This is John. I'll go down the hall and see if he's just stepped away, or if he's available to hop on.
Okay, thank you. Director of Finance, Jill Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, council. As the mayor mentioned, as of Tuesday, we're all back in the finance department. It's good to be back together. As you know, I started this, working at the city on March 9th, and within two weeks, City Hall was closed, and our staff was on staggered schedules. So it's definitely been a weird start to a new job. But I have to say, I am still so impressed with how well the mayor, the supervisor, all the department heads, and the entire city staff has managed this crisis. It actually has been really fun and enjoyable to work here. On Monday, we submitted our application for the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, which basically just reimburses us for up to 50% of qualifying vests for the police department. And as you know, we have new officers that we need to equip, as well as getting reimbursed for some vest replacement. We did notice an increase in the use of our online bill pay for utility payments during the COVID crisis, which has actually been a benefit, because that's a more efficient way for us to receive payment. So we're hoping that that will continue even when City Hall opens. Otherwise, there's nothing else new for me to report of, than I'm continuing to learn. Keep learning, sir, and looking forward to working with people now back in City Hall. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for finance.
Sure.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Jill, I was reading in the paper that the state is looking to do a 15% across-the-board cuts, and I am curious to know how that might impact revenue here in Cedar Woolley with what programs we get from the state with that potential cut. Thank you.
Thank you. I will defer that question to Doug at this point, since he is definitely working in a major way on the budget.
Okay, thanks, Jill, and thanks, Carl. Right now, I haven't heard of a state revenue stream or something like that that might be cut that's coming to us. Of course, I have seen it in the past where the state has dedicated funds to it, say, in financing or grant funds, and we've had those swept, meaning they've changed their mind and gone ahead and pulled that money back. Some of the grants that we have right now, they're pretty much dedicated from, say, motor vehicle fuel tax or something that can't necessarily be swept for general government purposes. So we're probably safe there, but you just never know. In times of crisis, what things happen, so you have to be prepared for those. But we haven't heard of any reductions or any planned changes like that at this time.
And Jill, I want to say that you, gosh, for somebody who came on and had to work under some really challenging situations, you have, you know, you've picked up the ball and you've ran with it. You've done a great job, and it's really a pleasure working with you, and very glad that you chose to come on board and work for the city of Cedar Woolley. So I know that I've already welcomed you, but now that everybody's back, I welcome you again. So thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Okay. So Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
So on the AV upgrade for Phase One for the council, Abidex is still got, looking for a replacement for the camera controller, that unit that seems to be on permanent backorder. There, I've got a meeting next week with the Port of Skagit on the fiber optic backbone project and kind of finalizing the franchise agreement. The mayor, Mark, Doug, and Nikki, and I will be there. I'm not sure who will be there from the port, but definitely Andrew and probably one of their attorneys, I would guess. Lots of public surplus auction action, helping out departments with that, and supporting some staffing changes in the wastewater treatment plant, getting phones swapped and computers and things like that. Lots of fun. And it's about time that we start looking at replacing the, some of the larger business machines here at City Hall. The ones we purchased over 10 years ago are a little long in the teeth. But if we can hold off to actually purchase them next year, budget for it for next year, and I'll do a cost-benefit analysis to kind of see if it makes more sense to lease rather than buy. Last time we did it, it made more sense to buy, and we definitely have gotten more life out of them than they generally project for a leased copier. So that's about it for us.
So, you know, I have to say, Bill, for, for many years, you were a Department of One, and now there are two of you, and it seems as though, even though the work, people would think that, you know, twice as many people take care of the work. I think the work's tripled over the last three months, and you have done a the work's tripled over the last three months. And you have done a great job, especially with the Zoom meetings and the GoTo meetings and all the updates that needed to happen, helping people such as myself with the technology. I want to thank you for doing that. I didn't know if you wanted to address the dates for the council meetings. Did you want to make comment about that? Because I know you did hear from the public regarding that.
Yeah, we had a member of the public comment that it could be easier on our website to, to indicate the, the, the change in times for the starts of the council meetings. So we made some updates to the website to reflect that. And some things in bold and some clear presentation in many areas on the website to make sure that people are aware that the meetings are earlier than, than they normally would be, that they're virtual, but they can still join remotely and listen.
Okay.
And by the way, the, the, the fact that you and council approved letting me hire Glenn, that's been fantastic. Glenn has been a, just a great, not only a very funny individual, is very helpful and self motivated, and I really appreciate that.
Yeah, you are. You're the dynamic duo. You really do a great job. Thank you. And I'm going to go to City Attorney, Nikki Thompson. Nikki?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am very excited that we have moved into Phase Two because that means that we're closer to reopening government. And certainly, one of my challenges thus far has been not being able to have that contact with City Council and to build that relationship with council. So I'm very much looking forward to moving through these phases so that I can build the relationship that I'm building with the department heads and the mayor with the council as well. So beyond that, as you all know, my work is largely behind the scenes, and I don't have anything to add.
Well, I do. I have to say that you've actually been incredible, picking up the ball and running with it again. You know, you have found situations here in Cedar Woolley where we kind of had some, some tightening and tweaking that we need to do, and you've actually been helping us do that. You're going to help us move through that tonight. I hope all the council members did receive your email regarding the, the appearance of fairness. So thank you, Nikki, and we'll hear from you in just a bit. And then to our city supervisor, Doug Merriman, who really, oh my gosh, you're somebody who took a new position and started filling a lot of other positions to get things done. And especially since we moved into COVID. Doug, really, really glad you're on board. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And it's been fun, actually. We've all had to reinvent and kind of stretch ourselves a little bit as a team. And everybody's jumped right in it. And for the most part, we haven't skipped a beat. We've still been doing business. Unfortunately, we don't have customers and our, our citizens coming in the door, but hopefully that won't be far off. And we can be back to our normal course of business. So a few of the things I've been working on that might be of council interest is primarily around money, of course, even though not so much in the finance area, but the logistics of going after a CARES grant money and those things. So I've been working with the department heads as far as what things would apply. We have, with final signatures, we'll be sending that into Commerce, our contract, and be starting to actually tally up those things we can send in to get reimbursed. Right before this meeting, I got off a teleconference with a number of other cities and the Department of Commerce, and were able to hear some of the fine tuning and things and suggestions that Commerce has for us to apply for. So that's really helpful. And we're looking to get as much as we can from those. So that will be good. The affordable housing sales tax, we did complete that at the last meeting. I am working with the Department of Revenue. They have all our information, and we'll be launching that one. Probably the first of August is when we start collecting sales tax for that program. So that's done. We've got that one wrapped, and we'll, we should see that starting here in another few weeks. And speaking of Department of Revenue, this week I did get access to their database. And what this gives me is I had to sign a confidentiality agreement, but I do have access to the sales tax data from all our businesses. So what I'm able to do is go in and kind of divide them by sector or type of business, and I can track and monitor how we're doing sales tax. Hopefully, it won't just be a shock at the end of the month when we get a check and we see it's less. We'll actually be able to see certain things. For example, the end of May, we got a check that was more than we thought. And I thought that was interesting because with some of the shutdown, we thought it would be less. We were surprised to learn the number one sales tax producer in the city in March was Amazon. And maybe that's not such a surprise because as people didn't go out and shop, they were definitely ordering and having things landing on their porch. So it's just interesting seeing those trends coming out of there. And that helps us try to project what we think the impact will be. The next item, if you've driven down State Street lately, you've seen herds of people climbing all over the library building. And it's been really good. We've been wrapping up, getting the roof on, getting all the flash things and all those pieces done. Today, we were finalizing up, getting the utilities hooked up, at least the water system, and getting all those things. So it's kind of nice getting out of concrete and beams and actually starting to get into those things that are going to be the final stages of the library project. So that's a good sign. As of right now, we're aiming for maybe the mid to the third week of September to be substantially complete with construction. It'll take a little time then to get the bookcases in and the books and the people and everything else. But we're moving along. We're still on budget at this time, and that project's going well. And one thing, under the CARES grant, there are a number of different programs we have there. And I know Mayor Johnson has been working on a really interesting one. She'll share with you. But I've just been working with her on the logistics of getting that put together. As you've heard before, staff are back in the office, and we've gotten to reintroduce ourselves and kind of get reacquainted, all with masks on and from at least six feet away. So we're following the safety guidelines that we should, and it feels good just to have everybody back together. So I appreciate everybody's work. And that's the end of my report.
All right. Good. Thank you, Doug. And, you know, I just can't help but praise the staff that we have been working with. I know I've never really done this before, but there's nothing like a crisis or a situation where you have to come together and think outside of the box and do some extraordinary work. And I have to say, we have done some extraordinary work, and it's because of the extraordinary staff that I am working with. And also, I want the council to know that you have been, your support has been tremendous. And through the weekly and sometimes biweekly statements that I put out to you, reports that I've put out to you, and I have thanked you, and I sincerely mean that. You know, you're the one who really helps us get through this and to make sure that the public is, is being seen and being heard. And, you know, the comments that you made and the, and the words of support that you've shared, I've appreciated. So with that, I will start the council comments and council reports. And I will begin with Councilman Couch.
Madam Mayor, nothing to report at this time. I will have a couple of questions under New Business.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Owen.
I have a couple of things. I want to pass out three halos, one to Bill and one to Doug and one to you, Mayor. I know you've worked real hard to get us back, get us into Phase Two. And a big thanks to the county commissioners and the other mayors. Down the road, not too far, we'll be able to go to Phase Three. But anyway, it's an improvement, and we all appreciate your hard work. And Bill has pretty well perfected the, the camera situation, and it's really good tonight. And it's been a pleasure to sit here and watch you eat. I can't, better pass him over some, some biscuits or something. But anyway, that, that's about all I have. And a big thanks, thanks to all, all the people down there, even the chief. They're all doing a good job. So thank you very much. And that, that's all I have to say. I'm going to shave one of these days.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you for your kind words. Moving on to Councilman Allen.
Oops. Did I turn it on?
You did. You did.
I did. Good. Okay. Anyway, I just, kudos to the city staff. I really think that I've lived here most of my life, and it's incredible on how well the staff works. Nathan presented something to him. He went to his supervisor. I'm sure Chief Tucker, you know, will check into the alley speed limit. It just, people in Cedar Woolley, our staff follows through on it. And I'm greatly appreciative.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Carnegie, I'm not sure if you were able to get the volume to work.
I just, yeah, I just finally, I couldn't even log on it, but I finally got, yeah. So I'm on my phone now. Actually, I just wanted to ditto everything everyone else said. Nice job, everybody. I'm hoping that we, that we stay at least in Phase Two and move forward and not have to ever go back. Hate to be the Debbie Downer, but I just was wondering if we have preparations for just in case that was to happen like it is in other states, that, you know, they have to kind of go backwards, take a couple of steps backwards, if we are preparing for that at all. And I don't know if that's even come up. I missed the first part of meeting trying to get logged on. But that was one thing I had to say. And another thing I was wondering is, I just wanted to thank our police department. And as a person of color, I, I have to say, really thinking, even if I think really hard about it and think about every detail, I can't think of any time I've ever felt unsafe here. And I just wanted to give kudos that I'm, I can proudly say that I've never experienced not even a touch of anything in, in our city or even in our county. And I do find out that we do already have a community policing in our city. We don't have it on paper, but we already practice it as a policy and as a philosophy. And I just want to thank them for that and continuing that work and, you know, getting in touch with our students in the schools and just being out and about. And the, the Facebook page is amazing. And all of those things really help. You know, our police department is really well liked. So, so anyways, and I didn't know if that question, the earlier question was for Doug about, you know, being ready for who knows what. Knocking on wood that that doesn't happen because business has been really great.
I can go ahead and touch on that one.
Okay.
One of the downsides of COVID is that we've been at home, a lot of us, and working under that environment. One of the good sides about it is that we've been all at home, working and being in that environment. So it's given us a lot of practice on telecommuting and, and using platforms like this one. If the unfortunate thing were to happen and we had to drop back and punt, we would just go right back to these same policies and the same operating procedures we've been doing the last couple of months. So there wouldn't be that much change, really. It would just get scarce around here as far as people again. But we're well versed at it. We've had a lot of practice now. So we would still be able to keep things moving.
Right on. And, yeah, sorry.
Well, I was gonna, I was just gonna make a comment. One of your first questions was, are we able to handle the situation if we have an increase in COVID cases? And that was actually one of the requirements by the governor's office for any kind of county to move forward, was showing that they did have enough hospital beds, enough PPE. Chief Klinger, you might want to step in and help me here. Testing, the testing was to continue. There was a criteria of nine. I think they increased it right before they moved us into Phase Two, or, yeah, right before they moved us into Phase Two. But I know they, they are looking to make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing in case we do, we do slip back, have, have an outbreak.
Knock on wood.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh huh. Chief Klinger, did you have any more to add to that, or?
No, we're with our cooperative purchasing with the DM and the other cities and the PPE that we have on hand. If we were to take a step backward, we, we would be well covered.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Good questions. Okay. Councilman McGoffin.
Hi. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to add at this time. Thank you.
Um, I, well, I'm curious about the contest. How's, how was that going? And, and it should be winding down here pretty quick, right?
Yes, it actually wrapped up pretty soon here, like a few minutes. So there weren't very many submissions, but the ones that did get submitted had lights on them. And I did hear about it in the community. People liked the idea and they liked seeing the videos, but people were kind of shy to upload, I think. So we didn't get very many submissions.
Well, I, yeah, it was. And I appreciate your efforts and the time and commitment that you put into that. It was a fabulous suggestion, and it is fun. Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
And Councilman DeYoung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just am walking around the neighborhood, just so impressed with folks' resiliency and seeing a lot of what we would call victory gardens popping up in front yards and backyards, and also some, some great play areas that have been developed with kids being more at home. And just seeing the, the family nucleus coming together in Cedar Woolley. It's just a great thing to see. Definitely continuing to be a resource to our federal folks on Heroes Act, giving them information as, as asked on how that would be helpful in, in our city. Additionally, just encouraging folks, please, please remember to wash your hands, to keep the social distancing. We want to keep, we want to keep moving forward. We don't have to slide back. Remember to wear your mask, have them. And it's great to be able to get a bite to eat in town, isn't it? And just exercise some patience if they're at 50% capacity and, and you might have to wait a little bit. But it's, it's great that we can spend money locally again. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So I only have a couple of items. The first one that I want to mention, Doug alluded to it. So in a conversation I was having with Commissioner Janiky, it was, I was made aware that through the CARES Act, our city may be able to put together a grant that would allow, or grants, I should say, that would allow for small businesses to apply for. So did some research, got ahold of John Sternlich at Edask, started inquiring as to what that would look like. Went back to Doug, and I said, this is what I'd like to see happen. What are your thoughts? How do we make it happen? Doug was more than helpful. We came upon the, the determination that we would put together, we would take $50,000. And of that, we would make, offer grants up to $5,000 for small businesses in town who have been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And we are going to work with Edask through this. We are waiting, though. The criteria is that we are waiting to hear from Commerce to give us the go ahead. We want to make sure that we are accurate in our assessment and that we're moving forward in the right manner. So more to come on that. I'm really hoping that it does pull together. We're hoping to put this together fairly soon. And so that, so that businesses who are awarded the monies can do what they need to do. And I will let you know. But very exciting that we can do that, put together a grant for our businesses. So anyway, I will share more on that later. our businesses. So anyway, I will share more on that later. Also, I have received from different people, a, they're asking me to, they want me to make statement regarding what's happening. And I think as a mayor and as a city council, we, we made a very clear statement back in November, when we put together the, it's the Mayor Proclamation of Cedar Woolley for Inclusion. And that is on our website, so I encourage people to go to that. I, you know, I think it's been stated by everybody here. We have a great, we have a great community. And, and I, and, you know, we just want to celebrate everybody. And we want to support those where we can. So for those who are asking, if you want to go to the website, check it out. And then if you have any comments or feedback, I'd be happy to receive that. Thank you. Okay, so then, moving on. Normally, at this time, we would have public comment. Unfortunately, we're unable to receive it at this time. It is closed. However, if you provide written questions or comments via email or by letter, we will put them into the minutes. So thank you for bearing with us as we, as we do this.
Mayor, this is Mark. I came on late. Sorry about that, but I am available to report.
Yeah, I, we'd love to hear it. Thank you, Mark. Go ahead.
Yes, so what tied me up for a few minutes is FEMA had actually given me a call following up on an email they sent while I was on vacation. They have a small program as well that they're encouraging us to apply under. So I'll discuss that with you and Doug tomorrow, and see if there's anything we want to do on that light as well. They have funds available for losses over $3,000 and up to 100 and some thousand. So another possible source for some funds. As far as Public Works is concerned, getting caught up again after my vacation the last couple of weeks, of course, David Lee is preparing for the construction start for the SR20 lane widening project. We're expecting them to be out probably in August doing the prep work for that. There's a couple of long lead time items on that. The new culvert that's going in to provide the access for the Skagit Behavioral Health Facility. And also, we're having to put a kind of a fancy valve on the end of our storm line to keep the fish from swimming up that. That was also a long lead time item. Our Jamison Overlay Project is out to bid and closes on the 18th. And we're hoping to have that on the council agenda for award on the 24th. Due to the drop in oil prices, we're seeing and hearing that there's excellent bids coming in on asphalt right now. So we're looking forward to that. Save us a few dollars hopefully there. We also have out to bid a paving project for the new parking lot. If you haven't been by there, Nathan and his team have been working very hard on Hauser Park. The new path is, has been installed all the way around the site. And they're finishing the grading for the parking lot today, as a matter of fact, putting the base on. So they'll be ready to pave as soon as we have a contractor set up for that. And they're putting the roof today on, probably finished putting the sheeting on for the restroom facilities. That's all looking pretty good. And I think you'll be pleased if you take a look at that and have a chance to walk on the path. I understand it's being well used already by neighbors, dog walking and those kind of things. So I believe that's going to be a very, very nice continued asset for the city. We have a number, there are things happening down at the wastewater plant. We are in the process of transitioning leadership from Debbie Allen, who's retiring on August the 21st, to Kevin Wen, our new superintendent. And that's going well. We started them back with a full crew about two weeks ago. Well, on June 1st, anyway, not quite two weeks. And they're, they're spending their time together, getting ready for that, that handover of operations. We're pretty pleased with the way that's going so far. We've got a good team in place there with the new hire we did recently. And in addition, they're having some issues with our rotors on our oxidation ditch. We're going to have to do one of our small works contracts to pull two of those out and replace the rotor blades and put new bearings in. One of them has already failed and is off, and we can only be down one at a time. But we're figuring the two larger ones, they're both the same age. It's been seven years since we did the last bearings and the last replacement of the blades. And so we'll do both of them when we do that sometime in the next couple of months. I am waiting for the final plans from Brown and Caldwell for our electrical system upgrade. And I expect to have those this week and get that out to bid. You should see something on that in the next couple of council meetings. We've received the parts for our diffuser upgrade and our aeration basins. And we'll be putting a contract out to do that. That's one of those things. It's a very specialized thing. The company that furnished the equipment also has a, another arm that does installation. And I'm going to be looking at, pretty closely at doing a sole source for that. It's pretty specialized work. There's some, there's some real warranty issues with, if you had an inexperienced contractor putting those in. And I'm going to look carefully at doing that as a sole source. So you'll see something on that at the next council meeting if we're able to go forward with that. The BNSF Bridge project that we have money, hopefully through the legislature on, we're still working on a contract with Wash Dot Rails. We had one negotiated, and then their director refused to sign it. It was a case of where they tried to use a cookie cutter contract that was based on one we've used in the past for local programs, but with a few nuances. And it simply had some restricted language in it that we had discussed, the city attorney and I, and, and we came up with a way of handling that, that satisfied their staff, but their director wouldn't sign it. So it's peck now for them to prepare another contract to, that it will address both of our concerns. And I'm really hoping that this delay doesn't put us in the crosshairs for this budget reduction that we're hearing about. And I do worry about that. But we're moving ahead as if that's going to happen. And we're also in a parallel mode of negotiating with BNSF on their contract. They've had our draft in hand for over a month now and have been kind of dragging their feet, I think, waiting to see that we get the contract with Wash Dot Rails. They have, however, been out to look at the site, and I have a meeting with them on Friday to look at it with PSE regarding how we're going to handle the interface with the high voltage lines across that site. So the signs are good that they're, they're still motivated to do that work. They are, however, also reeling under the impacts of COVID-19. Their revenues have dropped 70% on some of their runs. And so they're, they've announced some pretty massive layoffs system wide, and that could well affect their engineering and construction departments. So anyway, we'll stay tuned on that and hope that things go okay. We're thinking, having something to do like this with their own crews would be a good thing. So we'll see how that goes. We have on the next council agenda, the public hearing and first read for the 2021 to 26 TIB. And so that'll be coming your way. We did not run that through the planning commission as we have the last few years because of the restrictions on public hearings that were in place at the time. That's now been kind of rectified, but we'd already moved down this road. So we're going to continue with this process of the council doing the public hearing as well as the reads and adoption on that. I have been writing the last couple of days, the application for Skagit County Economic Development Grant that you approved at the last council meeting. And that grant will provide about $450,000 towards match for a TIB project in August. And the project, of course, as you saw from that memo, is an intersection improvement at SR9 and McGargle. It's a needed improvement. It's one that's needed regardless of whether the corridor goes forward or not. It'll, it'll improve the safety of that intersection in the peak hours in the morning and evening, and make it easier for the schoolchildren to get across as well. So looking forward to that. I did call the director of TIB to discuss that, to make sure that kind of fit in their desires to support our corridor project. When we were in Olympia, Ashley Poibart was one of our appointments there. And he was very excited about the overall corridor project. And, and he did affirm that he's very supportive of the project and encouraged us to submit the application. So I think if the county is able to provide us what the funds were requesting, then that's going to be a project that we'll be able to go forward with design in 2021 and construct in 2022. Also coming up for a near term council meeting would be our sewer comp plan. We've had that finished for a while and would have already brought it to your attention, but for the COVID-19 restrictions. But we would like to move that forward. That's going to include our recommendations for how ADUs are handled. And I understand that was discussed earlier. And we'll discuss that internally between us and building and planning and come up with a plan on that. But we do have that, right now, that particular nuance in the plan set up to match what we've done with our transportation impact fees as well. They're set up to mirror those, those same rates for ADUs. Sorry for all of that stuff to discuss, but you haven't heard from me lately. So we had a few things to bring to your attention. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Yeah, it's a lot. You have a lot of balls in the air, for sure. I have a question actually for you and John regarding the ADUs. I am wondering if there's a possibility, especially for Councilman Couch, because it sounds like he has some very specific questions. Is there a way that maybe he could connect with you and there could be some conversation there so that when we get to the council meeting, there might be a couple of options to offer us?
Certainly no problem on my end. John had sent me an email while we were earlier in the meeting telling me about that discussion with Councilmember Couch. So, yeah, we can range something on that.
Okay. Yeah. So, Councilman Couch, if you're okay with that, if that's something you're willing to do or have time for?
Sounds great. I'm more than happy to talk to Mark and John anytime.
Yeah, good. Thank you. All right. Thank you for bringing your concerns forward.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I had a question for Mark.
Yes, go ahead.
I received a report just before the meeting from someone who lives by the Winnie Hauser Park. And he had talked to the city earlier in the day and then yesterday about fencing. He was told a couple of years ago that there would be fencing around the housing to prevent people from parking in their lawns. But then he was recently told that that was no longer in the budget. And so I was wondering if we could just maybe get some clarification on that?
I'll, I'll talk to Nathan and see what, what's going on with that. I know he has some funds or some plans to put fencing, to continue the perimeter fencing, especially around the, where, which would be down towards the prospect area. I'm not sure what your complaintant would have meant to keep them from parking in their yards. That problem is related to SUNIC itself. We have no control over that. It's a county facility, county street. But I'll follow up and find out what the, what our.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a question also for Mark. This is Jermaine. Sorry. I was wondering, the Stacy Street development, do you know how much parking, extra parking there? Do you know offhand how much extra parking they're planning to have there?
On State Street?
Stacy, that Stacy Street development? I think, is it Stacy Street?
Actually, I'm not real sure where that's at.
So this is John, John Coleman. The, so Stacy Street is off of Trail Road. And there's, I think there's three off-street parking spaces that we required them to have. And then there's only about two, probably just two or three on-street parking, maybe not even that many.
Okay. That's, that's not a lot, because those are pretty big homes. But, okay. Thanks.
Okay. So, all right. That concludes the reports. Now, we're on to new business. And so tonight's agenda contains two matters that qualify as quasi judicial in nature. So I'm going to turn this over to our attorney, Nikki Thompson. And Nikki is going to lead us through this process before we look at possible resolutions for the preliminary plat for Garden Meadows and also for Brickyard. So Nikki?
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully you all have seen my email. Sometimes when we change attorneys, we change processes. And this would be one of those changes that I would like to move forward with. So prior to staff presentation on quasi judicial matters, it's important to determine whether or not the appearance of fairness doctrine requires any member of this body to refrain from deciding the matter. So in light of that, I'm going to ask you some questions before I turn it over to Mr. Coleman. Does any member of this council have knowledge of or have conducted business with either the proponents or the opponents of this plat? No response. I will.
Councilmember DeYoung, no.
Thank you. Does any member of this council have either a pecuniary or non pecuniary interest in the outcomes of this proceeding?
Please define pecuniary.
Financial?
This is Councilmember DeYoung, no.
Nikki, are you wanting people to give an answer, or are you just looking for a yes if people have? How would you like to handle this? Do you want a roll call?
Right.
So typically, I've never done this on a Zoom meeting. And so typically, I watch people's faces and just say, seeing none, and I proceed. But since we're on Zoom, how about if you have a yes answer, then you identify yourself and answer that you, that you, that you're answering yes?
All right. Perfect. Thank you, Nikki.
Sure thing. Does any member of this council know whether or not their employer has a financial interest in the property or the area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding? Hearing none. Does any member of this council live or own property within 300 feet of the area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding? Hearing none. Does any member of this council have any special knowledge about the substance of the merits of this proceeding, which would or could cause the council member to prejudge the outcome of this proceeding? Hearing none. Is there any?
Well, we have, we have received public comment about it, and we have had people come testify before it. So could you give us a little more of the boundaries of what we're looking at the guardrails, please?
So anything that has been received as public comment is actually a part of the record. What we're talking about here is things that you may have gained that are outside of the record. If you've had conversations with people, if you have special behind-the-scenes knowledge that you've gained by virtue of connections you might have, or, or your own employment, things like that. Something that is outside of the record.
Thank you for that.
Sure thing. So is there any member of this council who believes that he or she cannot sit and hear this matter both fairly and impartially as to the respective positions of the proponents and the opponents in this proceeding? Hearing none. Has any member had any ex parte contacts concerning this matter? Contacts that have been with members of the community that may not be reflected in the record is what we're looking for here? Hearing none. So typically, we would ask members of the audience if anyone wishes to disqualify any council members for potential appearance of fairness issues. Since we are on Zoom, and that's something we can't really do, is there any member of council that wishes to disqualify any other member of council because of a concern about the appearance of fairness doctrine? Hearing none. I will turn it over to Mr. Coleman.
Okay, thank you. So the first item on the new business agenda is the preliminary plat of Garden Meadows. The preliminary plat is a 28 lot residential subdivision. The property is located at 606 FNS Grade Road. It connects FNS Grade Road to James, to Jones Road, and is aligned with the, with Garden of Eden Road. The western version of Garden of Eden Road would continue down through this property. Road would continue down through this property. If this project were to be approved and constructed. Of the 28 lots, there's three duplex lots, so it's a total of 31 units. The map for anyone who wanted to see it is on page 85 of the council agenda. And there was a public hearing for this. The hearing examiner held the hearing and received public comments, both written and orally, and rendered a recommendation to the city council. That city, that recommendation is attached to the to the proposed resolution, which would grant preliminary approval of the plat of Garden Meadows. This is a fairly standard lot. It's not proposed as a planned residential development. It meets standard lot zoning size requirements for lots and duplexes are an allowed use in this zone, and they meet the zoning requirements for duplexes. It has a residential play area that would be owned by the homeowners association and has proposed amenities. Those are also included in the record. And staff has found that the for it meets all zoning requirements and other city regulations. It meets other regulations of the other city regulations, excuse me. And the recommendation from the hearing examiner is to approve the resolution to approve the preliminary plat of Garden Meadows, subject to the conditions in the hearings examiner findings. That's that's about all I have to offer on this. The fairly standard long plat application and all of the comments are included within.
Okay. So are there any questions, comments from the council? For John? Okay, hearing none. The action is requested, and this would be resolution 1053-20. Do we have a motion to move forward with this?
I'm a little slow. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I was looking at the map. I did have a question before we get into the motion. Or do you want to do questions while we're in discussion?
Well, I just I just called for the motion. So, well, go ahead. Go ahead with your question.
Okay. So, John, what's there now?
Right now, there is a single family house and a a field that has not been used for any agriculture. There hasn't been any animals on it. It's just been a vacant lot. This lot, the same lot was approved for for a fairly similar preliminary plat approval back in 2000. Oh, gosh, I forget, 2007, I want to say. But then the
Economy.
The Great Recession happened, and that that project went by the wayside. Preliminary plats have a shelf life. They're only good for a certain amount of years. So you know, once, since nobody was able to build it before that that time ended, they were required to, when new property owners took possession, they were required to go through the plating process again.
Right. Because, you know, credit became really, really hard. So my question then is impact fees. So how many units are coming in?
So this would be 31 units. I mean, there's so there's 28 lots, three of them are duplex lots. They can build single family houses on the duplex lots. I doubt that would happen. There'd probably duplexes. But so so it would be likely 31 units.
All right.
I would mention, this is Mark, if you don't mind my.
Hey, Mark.
So this project, it has an interesting nuance in that it is on the alignment for our proposed Jones John Liner Trail Corridor. So the requirement.
Yeah, I see that.
The requirement for the developer is to build that section of road for us, which is a very positive thing for us. They'll they'll dedicate the right of way and actually build improvements. And in exchange for that, they'll be eligible for both transportation and sewer impact fees in there. So I don't expect that they'll be paying a lot of actual fees, but we'll get the benefit of getting the road actually built and the right of way dedicated, which which is a really good impact, good result for us.
Yeah. Yeah, you anticipated my my next and final question. So thank you very much for teaming up on that.
Madam Mayor, just confirming this would be 1053?
Yes, 1053-20.
Madam Mayor, move to approve the resolution number 1053-20 regarding preliminary plat approval.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second. This is Jermaine.
Thank you, Jermaine. So I have a motion by Councilman Couch, seconded by Councilwoman Carnegie. Any more questions? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Bye.
Okay. Opposed, same motion, same what? Can you hear me? I'm getting that from Carl. So.
Mayor, I'm receiving packet loss from you. So, yeah, you have a little lag.
Those opposed? So hearing none, the motion carries, motion to adopt resolution 105320 to approve the preliminary plat of Garden Meadows, subject to the conditions contained contained in the hearing examiner's findings of fact, conclusions, and recommendation. Thank you, council. All right, John, we're or actually Nikki, do you need to with the questions for both of the plots? Or do you need to do that for this one as well, for the Brickyard Park?
So technically, each plat is a separate agenda item. It's a separate quasi judicial process. And so technically, we need to do it a second time. But I will
Okay.
through it quicker this time because you've heard it once.
All right. Thank you, Nikki. Go ahead.
So does any member of this council have knowledge of her or have conducted business with either the proponents or the opponents of this of this PRD? Hearing none. Does any member of this council have any financial interest or non financial interest in the outcome of this proceeding? Hearing none. Does any member of this council know whether or not their employer has a financial interest in the property or area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding? Hearing none. Does any member of this council live or own property within 300 feet of the area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding? Hearing none. Does any member of this council have any special knowledge about the substance of the merits of this proceeding, which would or could cause the council member to prejudge the outcome of this proceeding? Hearing none. Is there any member of this council who believes that he or she cannot sit and hear this matter fairly and impartially, both as to the respective positions of the proponents and the opponents in this proceeding? Hearing none. Has any council member had ex parte communications regarding this matter?
Hearing?
Yes, I have.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, that's in my ward. And I've had questions. I've had concerns passed on to me, but I haven't really got involved in it, other than speak whatever at the council meetings and just addressing their concerns. And that's basically all all the contact I've had with them.
Okay. And do you and do you feel like you can fairly and impartially hear the matter, even though you've heard things from out in the community?
Sure.
Wonderful. So I will turn this back over to John.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Council for going through that again. So this is for the preliminary plat approval of the plat of Brickyard Creek, which is a planned residential development. This, this is a 85 lot planned residential development. It would it is proposed as a age restricted development for residents 55 years or older. The property is located on McGarregle Road. It is unaddressed. It's parcel 39374, per the Skagit County Assessor's parcel numbers. It is 12.7 acres, and it is vacant, and it is in the residential zone. Again, the hearing examiner's findings of fact, conclusions, and recommendation is attached and has the extensive history of this project. The map of the proposed subdivision is exhibit T to the hearing examiner finding the fact and conclusions and recommendation. And so that is on page 582 of your council packet. And that's the the whole 85 units. And then the previous five pages from that shows section by section with a little finer detail. So as a as a PRD, this has proposed a larger recreation area than a standard subdivision in exchange for being allowed to have smaller lots. So this used the PRD regulations that the city council approved about a year and a half ago. And we the staff and the hearing examiner reviewed it for technical compliance with the zoning regulations, the PRD regulations, as well as other infrastructure regulations, and found that it does meet the the technical requirements. This project was has drawn a lot of attention from the the neighborhood. And there was a when the public notice of the application and CEPA comment period went out, we received several comments. And then we were able to issue a CEPA determination, a mitigated determination of nonsignificance. That included several items of mitigation to make sure that there was no addition, no impacts beyond what would normally be expected for a development. And that MDNS was appealed by a group of neighbors, and it had its appeal hearing on March 24. The hearing examiner heard that appeal and held the appeal period open for a couple of days to make sure that everybody was able to submit addition, submit information as part of that appeal process. The hearing examiner then rendered a decision to, he found that the MDNS was sufficient and did not, did not, did not approve the appeal. So the appeal was then set aside and allowed for the project to then continue. The complete description of it is in the hearing examiner findings. It is a lengthy document, and it is about 575 pages. I apologize for the length. But we want to make sure that council has all of the information that the hearing examiner and the appellants and everybody, all of their information was in there. So there's there's not a whole lot more to say about it. The it has drawn a lot of attention, and it is a PRD. The hearing examiner does make a recommendation to approve. And so it is before the council now for them to make a decision on a resolution to approve the preliminary plat of Brickyard Creek, subject to the conditions contained in the hearing examiner's findings, facts, and conclusions and recommendation.
Yeah, John, I got a question, John. I'm not happy with with the traffic situation, and I don't think the it's been addressed. It's not been addressed enough to suit me because that is that is a congested area, especially when schools in very dangerous area. And and 85 units is going to put a lot more traffic on that McCarville. And and I don't know what you people have in mind to tackle this thing. Do you have any plans or?
So there is a transportation, there's a transportation impact study that was done by the applicant as part of this. That's required for any larger development, whether it's, you know, a commercial development, a school, a large subdivision, a multifamily, something like that. So that was that was done, and it is part of the record. I'm looking to see what page that is on. The city Public Works Department, its city engineer reviewed it and then sent it also to make sure that it was adequate, sent it for a third party review to another transportation company to review. Again, this is all part of the record. The the third party reviewer found that it was adequate. In addition to the that traffic study, the city commissioned their own citywide transportation study to look at the impacts of this proposal, to look at the impacts of two other subdivision proposals in the eastern portion of Seadrwelly, and see what impacts those would have on citywide. That that report is also in the record here. And it showed that it did not cause, even though even those three together did not cause failure at the one particular intersection that we're concerned about, which is the the intersection of McGarregle and State Route 9, and also the same intersection as, you know, John John Liner becomes McGarregle Road. So we pay particular attention to the impacts on that intersection. And the studies showed that they did not, this project in particular, and even the project, those projects, with two other projects in mind, did not cause that intersection to fail. So information like that, that was used and reviewed by the hearing examiner, and it was all part of the public record for the MDNS appeal. That was actually the crux of the appeal. And so it was shown that the traffic impacts of this, this this development would not cause significant problems. Now, one of the things about a an age restricted development is that it doesn't, it doesn't, for our transportation tables that the Public Works Department uses, these are national transportation tables, they do not produce the same amount of traffic that a single family residence does because with age restricted, there's different number of people coming and going during the day and not going to work every morning necessarily. So there is a reduction in the the percentage. So that was also considered by the hearing examiner and the Public Works Department is in the determination.
Yeah, well, that's going to put a lot more traffic on the little Carter Street, I know that. And it's too bad they couldn't have over to Highway 20.
All right.
This property is not connected to Highway 20, so that's not an option.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
This is Councilwoman Carnegie, and I have a question about the age restriction, actually. Because so wildflower development wasn't that built as an age restrictive as well, and they weren't able to sell those units under that? Isn't that how that worked? And now it's open to families?
It was not approved. I have no recollection of it ever being approved and required to be a age restricted. The wild, meaning wildflower, which is a development on fruit Dell near the Swift Center.
Yeah. Okay, so would that now if these don't sell as, so regardless of whether or not that happened or not, if these don't sell as age restrictive, then what happens? I mean, would they have to come? I mean, and they're already built? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, if they can't sell them, is a seller just out of luck? out of luck, or does that somehow come back to haunt us? Would they have to open it up to families, and then we'll have even that much more traffic? Do you know what I'm saying?
Um, the, the HOAs, the HOA says that it's going to be age restricted, so they would have to change their HOAs, and they would have to pay, um, different city fees, so we do have the, uh, Nikki might be able to help me on this, but, um, they, if the HOA requires it to be 55 and over, then the city should have the ability to require that it may re, stay 55 and over, or they need to do something through the city to, to change that.
So if the CCNRs say it's restricted community, then those CCNRs are going to be binding, but that's a civil issue, that's not something the city typically, um, gets involved with at that point later on down the line, um, I haven't looked at your code to determine what would occur if there was a desire to just change the character of the neighborhood, um, which I can certainly do and get back to you at a later date, um, but typically CCNRs are, those are civil issues, the enforcement thereof is a civil issue.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So this is Mark, I'd like to make a comment just for the, bit of the order there, too, um, the intersection that has been of concern, uh, in addition to the, uh, general traffic on McGargle by, by the folks who made the appeal, was the same intersection we're talking about for the grant application that we're doing right now, and just to kind of explain the process and how it works and how we can do these projects, uh, we, we've identified the intersection at, uh, Highway 9 and John Liner McGargle as a, as a intersection of interest for some time, it's been in our transportation improvement program for some years, um, we've accelerated the timeline on that, not specifically because of the development on McGargle, but because when we, uh, at the moment we complete the new, uh, Jones John Liner corridor, uh, that intersection's level of service will drop from its present C, which is more than adequate for, um, the traffic we have on the road down, uh, to below level of service D, uh, it's, it's related to turning motions at the intersection, and just to let you know, the, the way that we fund projects like that, uh, we apply for grants as, as you've approved for us to do, uh, but then we also have to have our local match, and the primary source for our local match funds are GMA impact fees, you've heard me say that many times, so it, it, it behooves us to support projects that, that, uh, do work within our overall plan, our comprehensive plan, because they do support these needed improvements that we have at system wide, uh, that intersection is challenged not just because of, uh, the traffic on McGargle, but also because of traffic on Highway 9, and, 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 and as John mentioned, uh, we, we were, as public works, extremely concerned about the cumulative impact of development on that particular intersection, and so we did, uh, not one, but two, uh, reviews of the intersection, they, they verified two things, first, that the, the intersection currently operates at an adequate level of service, uh, and secondly, that the, uh, the, the development in and of itself of this parcel plus Duke's Hill, plus one other one we looked at, uh, would not, would not drive it below a level of service D, in other words, uh, those, those, uh, projects from a traffic analysis standpoint would not, uh, kick in any special requirements for upgrade, nonetheless, uh, the corridor project will, so it's important for us as a city to, uh, move forward with the improvements to that project, and so, uh, on that basis, it's, it's a good thing that this project is moving forward to replenish our, uh, depleted GMA impact fee fund, and so public works, uh, from that aspect is, is supportive of this, uh, as you already know, there's been a long process to determine the compliance of the project with our comprehensive plan, which it does, uh, but strictly from a practical aspect, uh, it furthers our goal of having funds available through GMA, actually, fund the needed system improvements that we have from a citywide standpoint, so I just want to make sure I made that clear to you, thank you.
Okay. Is there any more discussion regarding, uh, this will be resolution 105420, and it is to, um, approve the preliminary plat of Brickyard Park, subject to the conditions contained in the hearing examiner's findings of facts, conclusion and recommendations, so I see, I see Councilman DeYoung has a question or a comment?
Thank you, I didn't want to interrupt you, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, I, um, have questions as well, um, especially with the traffic, and with the input that we received from the city attorney, uh, I, I think I'm going to need a little further clarification, uh, on the issue that Councilman, uh, or Councilmember Cornigay brought up, because that is a concern, and when the attorney says that they're not aware of, um, what our ordinance, uh, is, are, uh, on that, uh, because basically, and, and the word I would use here is bait and switch, it'd be something that, you know, the economic, uh, viability of this, we're in our second, uh, month of a recession, and, uh, as we heard in the previous development, um, uh, conversation, that, you know, there's things ready to go, but then the financing falls flat because of, you know, economic conditions, and I, I believe when the attorney is talking about CCNRs, they mean covenants, conditions and restrictions that are based out of the homeowners association or HOA, um, and, uh, talking about that being a civil matter versus something that the city would get involved with, uh, I, I do have concerns because, um, you're asking us to take a, a, kind of a leap of faith here that, uh, it will remain, uh, 55 and over, uh, that, that does drop on, on the tables for the methodology of how that traffic studies, plural, have happened, multiple, which I truly appreciate that we've done, um, but that's the biggest thing we're hearing in the community, is this traffic is going to have an impact on them, and I walk, I walk through there, I've seen what happens, uh, when school, uh, is let out, I have grand concerns about what's going to happen on Carter Street, uh, because that was not designed to, to take, uh, that intensity of, of, of traffic, uh, that it's already seeing now, um, so I, I also am looking at the, the comments that are in the packet, uh, of folks that are interested in, well, what about the great blue herons that we've seen, are there some species that are going to be impacted by this, it is relatively close to Brickyard Creek, and that's a very specific question I'd like to have answered now, is, uh, will our easements and setbacks, uh, that the city has on Brickyard Creek still be, um, in, in play, uh, are, are those set in stone, um, yeah, and so is there an answer for that one, and then the rest we're just, uh, I, I have reservations based upon, uh, not, uh, not knowing what our ordinances are to kind of, if you clawback-
So I can, I can address all of those questions, so, first of all, the application is for a age restricted, um, development, the resolution says, you know, whereas Brickyard Creek LLC property owner, Skagit County, parcel number 39374, a 12.7 acre parcel located in McGarregal Road, has applied for preliminary plat approval for the proposed plat of Brickyard Park, a planned residential development, a proposed age restricted 85 lot development, so in the application, in the resolution, in the hearings examiner findings, it states that it is a age restricted, so to me, this is an age restricted, I don't see any way for them to pull a bait and switch and say that they can't, because they're approved through the review process for, uh, age restricted development.
Yeah, John, I, I really need to, I need to come in here a little bit, I really want to make it clear that that's because of economic conditions that, that was due, that I am not impugning the reputation of the developer in this point, this is just something in the future that we, we've seen from the past with economic conditions.
Well, in what I'm saying-
Conditions, we need to clarify that we're not in a recession, and I think that it's important for the council to recognize that we can't hold this plat project hostage because of an issue with an intersection that was, that has been brought forward to the council, and we've talked about it long before this project even went into, came in to anybody's mind, um, out of everybody on the council, I live the closest to the intersection you're talking about, at times, yes, it's congested, we have multiple traffic studies in front of us, we've talked about the issue, the visibility issue, and those, we've gotten the answer from city staff that we're, you know, we're working towards that, but we need to look at just the facts that are in front of us, and the nuts and bolts of this, and not, you know, just because of a bad intersection, we can't hold up this, this project, and, you know, we have other developments that are closer to Brickyard Creek than this one, and, so I don't, I, I guess if we're looking for a reason, you know, you can look for a reason to hold up anything, but I, you know, I live in this area, you got to put your personal feelings aside, and we just, we need to follow what we need to do, you know, and the facts are in front of us.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Madam Mayor? Mr. Allen, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Allen.
Councilman, okay, uh, you know, I'm, I'm listening to this with a lot of, uh, patience, anyway, uh, you know, this is past a hearing examiner, I probably planning to make, uh, it sounds like we are, I mean, the intention police on what the developers intend for it to be, we are not there to be the police, Carl, I'm sorry, I like you, but we're not there to please, if it's past muster, I understand, there's a lot of people that don't like the project, uh, I don't like, I've lived here for 28 years, I've never had standing water, I will blame it on water coming down from Duke's Hill, but the reality is, is past muster, and I, I don't think we need to grandstand, I'm, I'm-
Thank you, yeah, and you know, I want to, I want to, um, extend my thank you to everyone, I think there's been some really thoughtful discussion and answers here, um, I do have a comment, so over the last two and a half years, um, attending the senior center for lunches and having opportunity to visit with a lot of the seniors there, also the coffee and conversations, most, most of the time are attended by people who are seniors, they have been asking for a development like this, so this is a much needed development, we don't have, we don't, really don't have this within our community, um, I think Mark stated it well when he was talking about our GMA, so, um, and also, uh, beautifully stated, uh, Councilman Allen regarding, yeah, this is, this is, this ha, this is ready to go, it's just a matter of whether or not, um, we're going to make that motion, so I am actually looking for a motion, it'll be motion 105420, um, and I'm wondering if anyone is willing to make that motion.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Allen, I will make the motion to approve, uh, 105420-
All right.
-as written.
Second, Councilman DeYoung, second.
Okay, so I have a motion by, um, Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman DeYoung, the motion is to adopt resolution 105420, it approves the preliminary plat of Brickyard plat, subject to the conditions contained in the hearing examiner's findings of fact, conclusion and recommendation, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Jermaine.
Any opposed?
Aye, I, I oppose for the traffic reason, that's all.
All right, so we have, um, six approval and one dissenting vote by Councilman Owen, so motion carries, okay, again, I want to thank everybody for the, um, thoughtful discussions and the, um, answers that were given, um, I think you're all very, very skilled, and, uh, and if we have, um, nothing for the good of the order, I am going to say we are adjourned, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.